Hi guys, I think we got it now.
Thanks, Steve. Good to see you.
Good to see you. Okay, let me just go back here, City of Kingston YouTube. Okay, go live. Okay, let me see who's in the waiting room. Rennie? Kevin? Steve? Tony? Let me see who else is there. I think I got everybody. All right.
Hello, everyone.
Hello. Let me just go back. I think I got two more people I need to add. Oh, nope, I think I got everybody now.
So we got, I'm trying to see who we got for this, for the committee. And Doug, I always, Doug, you're not on this committee, are you?
Yes.
Alrighty, why, I always got these old ones that still have Patrick on it, that's why. I apologize. Alrighty.
I think I'm on it.
I think you are, Doug, yes.
I got Michelle, I got Jeffrey, I got Doug, Randy said he was gonna be late, and then I got myself, so we have enough, so we, Randy said, don't wait for him. And I'm not sure if you've invited, and John Schulteis, Dee.
Yep, it's, he's muted right now, but he's been invited.
And then I think.
Let me know. You see him? There he is.
I, I see Steve here. I'm not sure who's here for to represent CAC. Oh, I think, I'm not sure.
That is supposed to be, um.
Kevin?
Kevin.
Alright, so he's here. So, uh, welcome, everybody. So we'll get started here, Dee, let me know when you're ready to record.
I'm all ready. It's, it's on, YouTube is on.
Alrighty, so welcome, everybody that's out there in virtual land, and sorry for that little delay. And thank you for joining the City of Kingston's Common Council at our Public Safety General Government Meeting. Today is September twenty-second in 2021. Before we begin, we would like to go over a few guidelines to help us navigate the system as efficiently and respectfully as possible. And I think I was gonna have to read this again this year, but I guess I am. And we ask that the members of the public and press remain muted and off-camera for the length of the meeting. The moderator for tonight's is Deputy City Clerk Dee Sills. And, and she reserves the right to mute anyone who unmutes themselves. Council members and city staff will control their own mute button. Good practice would be to mute yourself if you are not speaking to avoid background noise and feedback. If a council member or staff wishes to speak, they will raise their hands. I will call on members by stating their name clearly for audio listeners. All of our meetings are recorded. Both video and written transcripts will be made available to the public on the city website. Although we will not have public speaking tonight, you can sign up to speak at our monthly council meeting. Please email Lisa Tinti to sign up by noon the day of the meeting, or you can submit written comments for the record by the same deadline. The email is E M Tinti, that's T I N T I at Kingston-ny.gov. Again, that's E M Tinti at Kingston-ny.gov. You can also drop off comments at the Dropbox located outside the side door of the city hall. We also encourage you to reach out to committee chairs or your ward representatives at any time. Deputy City Clerk Dee Sills is the moderator for today's meeting. She has a right to lock and pause the meeting to reject anyone who has behaved inappropriately. Lastly, at tonight's meeting, we have in attendance Chair, myself, Tony Davis, and committee members and Doug Coop, and Jeffrey Ventura Morrell, and Michelle Hirsch, and Randy Scott Childress will be joining, and he's at another meeting, who will be coming in when he can. And, uh, non-voting members, we have Steve Shabbitt in present. Let me see here. Sit, and city, and staff, we have John, City Engineer John Schulteis, and we have Representative Kevin McAvoy, and that's gonna be speaking for CAC. I believe that's the initials. And I don't see anybody else here. So, thank you for your patience during these difficult times, and on behalf of the Common Council, I wish you and your family good health, and call this meeting to order at six forty-four. So we have some things, several things on the agenda for tonight. So I'm gonna start with the first one on the agenda. Twenty-seven, and that would be Reserve Parking, Pole Street. Alderman Shabbitt, and we spoke earlier, Steve, you had, I don't see that guest person, I'm not sure what's going on with that.
No, I, I don't, I don't see her name up there. She said she was gonna try and be here.
I have a Gary Daniels. I have a Gary Daniels in the waiting room. Gary Daniels.
Nope, that's not it.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, well, anyway, I guess we'll have to proceed without her. Tony, you and I spoke this afternoon. I saw John's email, you know, so I'm not quite sure, you know, I can give you the history, you know, I was hoping she would be here maybe to shed a little more light about, you know, her, her problem, but anyway, she lives on Pole Street, which is, as John knows, pretty, pretty tiny street. But she rents out one floor of her apartment to a, to a doctor, and, you know, quite simple. There's really not a lot of parking, you know, for residents, or, you know, people who are patronizing the business, they usually end up parking, you know, down, you know, in the public lots down on, on the strand, you know, which is not too convenient for them. So, the owner of the building has requested, you know, some, some reserved spot for the doctor's office. You know, I know this is kind of touchy, touchy territory here, but I told her I would bring it to the committee and, you know, maybe we could come up with some solutions for her. I know John, John is familiar with the area. I don't know if you were there to look at that, John, I know you've been there enough, you probably know it by heart by now, but, uh, anyway, that's that, that's all I can offer. Yeah, I was hoping she would be here, you know, if there were some, some other circumstances, you know, of which I'm unaware, but, you know, she, she is not here, so I guess she is relying on me. So, anyway, that's, I guess that's about all I can really say about it, so that's it for me.
Alrighty, and again, I'm not sure if all the committee members have received John's comments on it. If, if not, and I can forward this to, and to forward this to, I'll just put Alderman, and I'm not sure if everybody did receive it, but John, if you can comment on this, John, City Engineer John Schulteis on this particular one, and if you have anything to add, and says, I'm not sure about the committee members. Thank you.
Yeah. Good evening. Yeah, if you have my written comments, it basically just says that the.
One thing, John, before you start, and, and Chair, and Committee Members, I disforward that to the Alderman's website, so you should receive it, if you did not receive it already.
Yeah, so good evening. Yeah, my, my comments were just that this type of request in the past has not been considered, you know, by this, by this council, to my knowledge, to, to reserve on-street parking for a particular entity rather than for the general public. So that as, as I understand it, you know, that, that's what's being requested. You know, an, an alternative in some of these situations is to consider limited-time parking, which, you know, sometimes has the effect of freeing up or causing the, you know, parking spaces to turn over and become available more often.
Yeah, she is requesting, she's not requesting it, you know, twenty-four-seven, you know, the business is only open, I think Monday, Monday through Friday from nine to, nine to four, nine to five. So, you know, it's not, it's not around the clock.
Well, David, I'm sorry, I see Doug Coop, you have your hand up?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Tony. This is Alderman Doug Coop. The problem with this type of requests, and, and we've had a few of them in the past couple of years, as I recall one on Fair Street for a physician who had a parking lot in the back. Currently, one of my constituents on Main Street has a similar request, he also has a parking lot in the back, but he wants a, 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 a reserved spot directly in front of his house, and that's, that's a, you know, half a block from, from Wall Street. So it's very precious parking that if we allocate things like this to that particular business, it's, uh, you know, most of the time, the, the thing will be, the place will be empty. You know, it's not, it's not like you have one patient coming right after the other. So, you know, that's my problem with this type of request.
Alrighty, and I see Randy Scott Childress, Alderman Randy Scott Childress?
Yeah, thank you. I apologize for being late, but I would like to say, I think this is concerning because what it amounts to is subsidizing one business. Our on-street parking is, is, is for the general public. We're subsidizing the general public to have places to park, not one specific business or entity.
Anybody else? I'm just scrolling through to see hands, anybody else? And I'm not sure, somebody's on phone call?
Yeah, somebody's on there. I haven't let them in yet, though. I, that might be them.
Wesley?
Brenda, her name.
There's no name, just a phone number. So I asked them to unmute.
Hello?
Yeah.
Caller?
I asked them to unmute, and they haven't, so I don't.
Maybe, I don't know, Steve, if you know the number, if that's their phone number.
Um, actually, I'm.
Don't know.
I'm looking it up right now.
Hi.
Hello?
Hi, this is Kim. Hi, this is Kim Scott from Kingston. I'm just listening in on the meeting, so.
Alrighty, alright.
Not regarding this issue, okay?
Thank you, Kim.
Okay, thank you.
Alrighty, so any other questions in regard to this? I mean, uh, I mean, it's, you know, my, my take on it is, again, states, we might be opening ourselves up to numerous, and other and businesses or whatever, requesting such, and such requests. And I can see, as John Schulteis is saying, if you, I mean, we do have ones where parking for a limited time, twenty minutes, one hour, two hours, wherever it might be, and that I don't know if we can do this reserve, a particular spot there for, for all day, Monday through Friday. That's just my take on it. So Steve, I don't know what you want to do, if you want to move forward with the thing, you want to table it for, get more information from the, the constituent, or we can just, you know, you, you roll with it, I can, you know, present the, uh, the committee report and see, and what the vote is, Steve?
Yeah, I, I don't think, I mean, I, I can't imagine she, she has any more to offer than I just told you. That, that's the situation. I mean, you know, we know, we know parking is at a premium everywhere in this city, and, you know, people like to do that. She called me, I figured, well, okay, I'm just, you know, I'm gonna, you know, put it before this committee and, you know, have John assess the situation. You know, what everybody's been saying is pretty much what I've been saying when others have come forward with this, so, uh, you know, it's, it's not like I'm, you know, gonna jump up and down and stomp my feet, and, you know, you know, I get all this, and, you know, if it wasn't my constituent, I, you know, I probably wouldn't even be submitting as much information as I have, but, uh, anyway. That's it, so I will, I will leave it in you your hands to make a decision here, I guess, and.
Well, alright, so, I'm just gonna reserve and read the committee report. Is there any more discussion on it, I should say, any more discussion? Randy, tell me if I'm going, doing the right thing? Alright, so no more discussion, so, uh, I guess I'll just read the thing and see if there's any motion, reserve parking, reserve parking space at fourteen Pole Street for a business. And already, am I doing it wrong? Do I have to motion the second to do this first?
Sorry, my, me was, yeah, so we, well, technically, we've already had discussions, so, at this point, yeah, we would need a motion for, for discussion among ourselves.
Okay.
And a second, so if nobody makes a motion.
Do we have a motion to have a discussion among ourselves? That we have a motion among ourselves. Michelle, I can't see your hand, Michelle's a motion, second? No, second, I'll second for discussion, and just so we can do something with it. And so, we got a motion by Michelle, second by me. Any more discussion on it? Anybody want to, Randy?
Yeah, I would just reiterate what I said earlier, that I, I, I think that this would set a dangerous precedent of basically subsidizing specific businesses with a public good. And, you know, the, the, the public that street parking is meant to serve is the people who are looking for a place to park, who are driving in general, not those who are going to a specific business. So I would, I'm against this motion.
Anymore? Not see any more discussion? I'll read the committee part and then take a vote, and the committee works reserve and request for reserved parking space at fourteen Pole Street for, at fourteen Pole Street. All in favor? Show hands. I guess scroll through all this. So nobody for, against, show hands. I got Doug, I got Randy, I got Shell, and I got Jeffrey. Okay, so it doesn't pass, and, but it still goes on to, and, regular committee, right, Randy, if I'm correct, for a vote? Alright, so we, I'll get this out for it, and, and I apologize, Kevin, because I, you're here to speak on the, on the, the council, so I will let you go, Kevin McAvoy, if you're here to present some information, and then we'll get back to our agenda.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm trying to unmute there. Okay, I think we're good, and I got video on, yeah, okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak on behalf of both the Climate Smart Commission and the CAC, and I'll keep it brief, it's just about you know, the key points of the last two meetings. We'll start with the CAC first. There was Susan Winchell Sweeney from Bard is doing mapping, and she did a mapping presentation of sensory evaluation. Now, that's a, a nice term for, they're trying to, they're literally going around town and identifying odors. One of the places, which is self-explanatory, would be the Wastewater Treatment Plant. The other place where she was going, you know, with her interns and students, was over to Kingston Point Park to see if any of the wood smoke from, you know, the Hyatt Brickyard Restaurant to waives over across to the beach. I don't know if that actually does happen. I haven't smelled it, but they, they're gonna check that out. More substantive discussion we had was on the Community Preservation Plan. Julie Noble and Emily Flynn are specifically working on that, and Kingston Land Trust has been approached, and we had a meeting with them, and will be working, I believe Kingston Land Trust will be involved in the advocacy aspect of it after the plan is formed. The CAC will be providing input on the Community Preservation Plan, and one of the things we did specifically at the last meeting is we reviewed mapping that Norwalk, Connecticut did. Now, when we did the Natural Resource Inventory and the Open Space Plan, we, we developed a lot of maps, but there's a couple of maps that Norwalk had that we don't have, and one was a social equity map, and the other one was a public health index map. The target audience for this mapping, if we were to develop it, or, or the, we're actually, we think the Community Preservation Plan consultant would develop it, would be city staff, you know, particularly the planning department, you know, they might find use for that. The other thing that with the, with the CAC is we're getting, we're a little short on members. We're, just for this meeting, we were down to three members. Me, the chairperson Emily Hauser, and Sebastian Pilatieri, who's day job is at Riverkeeper. Ted Greasy, formerly of the Kingston Land Trust, has submitted an application. I don't know what the status of that is, other than he submitted it, and we gave the mayor a letter of support on that. I've worked extensively with Ted at the Kingston Land Trust, and, you know, I endorse him highly for any endeavor like this. Julie ran us through, uh, Engage Kingston on several projects, which I guess, if we had, still have John here. One of them was Foxhole and Flatbush, and the bike lanes, and that, this CAC is developing input on that. And I believe a letter may be submitted at some point. Yeah. The last thing of significance on the CAC end is the City Tree Planting Grants. The prioritization for that is for tree planting, plantings awards four, five, and six. And information from the tree inventory will be used, you know, in that regard. I believe the applications are at the end of September, unless it's extended. So I think that's where we're at on that. I also had reviewed on behalf of the CAC of what was happening with the planning board. There were two projects we commented on previously that had come up again, one is sixty-five eighty-five East Strand. The specific comment was on FEMA mapping and sea level rise, and whether the project has enough elevation. They did elevate it during the design phase a couple of years ago at the planning board, but it's back now, and we'll have to see what, what's gonna be. The chairperson Emily Hauser of the CAC sent, resent the comments to Suzanne, so the planning board has them, but I understand they tabled that at Monday's meeting. Kingston Meadows is the second project, and I believe Peg O'Leary appeared again, and she reintroduced that project, and there are a lot, there was a lot of questions, I think, as to how, because the, the neck deck on that was done eight years ago. So there's a lot of discussions occurring as to how the SEAC would work on that project, and I would refer you to Dan Gartenstein in that regard. The, the comments that the CAC had submitted eight, nine, ten years ago, was it, was on citing seniors in the floodplain, is that's an appropriate place for seniors to be, and what happens if there's an emergency, and how do you get them out? So, that, that'll be continued. If anybody does have any nominations for the CAC in, in your wards, do send your constituents our way, you know, we, you know, we're actively seeking people. I'll move on, because Serena's not here, to give you a very quick update on the Climate Smart meeting that we had just prior to this meeting. Julie ran us through the, Julie Noble, that is, ran us through the Climate Action Plan Update. There is, our Project Advisory Committee, which I serve on, is gonna be meeting in October at an unspecified date. I think we have to do a doodle poll on that. And there'll be a public meeting on November eighth. That will coincide pretty much with some of the zoning things that are going on, which we, I discussed at this meeting. I had attended the Monday meeting for city board members and staff, because I'm on several different city boards. That, I thought that went really well. We had a very good rapport with Dover Call, and their staff members, and with LeBurgers. That looks like it's, they're gonna be doing the charrettes starting November fourth and fifth, I believe it is, or is it fifth and sixth, let me pull that up. The first, it's the first Thursday of November, for, I think, I think it's the fourth or fifth, and then they're gonna be doing five or six days after that of charrettes. So they're gonna be in Kingston for, you know, pretty much a full week, and that would be a good opportunity for those of you who haven't already met with them to do that. I believe I understand from Dover Call, they had a meeting with some of the council members already? Yeah, okay, good, then, then you're, you're up to date on that. The other thing we did here at Climate Smart was, we were talking about community choice aggregation. That came out of the Solarize Kingston discussion, and I believe a project administrator, an RFP may go out for that. So, I'm not sure, there's too much else there that. And there's a lot of stuff here, but I don't want to take up your whole meeting. The, the last thing would be Julie, again, discussing city sustainability projects, and that soccer field is complete at Kingston Point Park. The new parking lot is now paved and raised to account for some sea level rise, at least, hopefully, a lot of sea level rise. Again, we reviewed the Community Preservation Plan, and that just about covers it for me. Do you have any questions on any of the stuff? I think I threw a lot at you really fast. Yeah, Randy, go right ahead.
I have a question. You were, you were talking about the, the few people who are at the last meeting of the CAC?
Yeah, the, the presentation.
Yeah, no, the, in terms of membership.
Oh, yeah, we have three members right now, and a fourth member is pending at, at the mayor's office for appointment.
That's, that's literally the number of people who are, who are, who are on the, the committee?
Yeah.
Okay.
Julie had to head off, that's, if you recall that, you know. She's still there, but she's not a voting member. She's.
Right.
A role similar to Suzanne at the Planning Department.
Yeah, I thought there were a dozen or so people who were on that committee not that long ago.
Uh, that would be the Climate Commission, I think.
Okay.
Thinking of, that has a substantial membership. This, this one, Betta, who's on the Climate Commission, she had, had a child, and she got off of that, she's still on the Climate Commission. Julie had to get off of it. Lorraine resigned over the wood smoke issue. Right.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that I heard you correctly, that you were talking about the total number of members, as opposed to just who showed up at one meeting. Great.
So three is a quorum, so we have a quorum. Provided we all show up, but we are, we, we do have a fourth person pending, but it's always better to have an odd number, not four. So the more, the merrier, I think.
Great, thank you for that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Alrighty, I, I did receive a tree planting grant application at my home, so I did pass it out to my constituents on the Kingston and the Kingston Ward Six Facebook page, so, and I did post that out there, so, and I'm assuming, and all the women, and Rita Wortherpin from Ward Five, or Four, and Don, Alderman, Don Palamino also received that, so we put that out there. But I appreciate Kevin, your updates, and thank you. If there's no any more other questions, we'll let you go.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Take care. Have a good evening. Alright, so the next thing on the agenda, then, back to the agenda, was handicap parking requests at sixty-sixth Avenue Street, and that would be for me. And so I have all the credentials for sixty-sixth Avenue Street, and they need to have, they have a license plate, handicap license plate, and not the sticker, so I have that all included in my materials. And there's any questions in regard to that discussion? Open for discussion? None saying? And can we take a vote on it then? All in favor? I mean, and, of course, and John Schulteis just to say, this, John Schulteis, the engineer, had no problem with this particular application, and again, that you guys should have received that email from me.
Did you get a motion in a second?
Oh, sorry, motion, discuss, motion? I'm so, so nervous that it's not gonna pass. Can I have a motion? Michelle Hirsch, second. Jeffrey Ventura Morrell. Right, any more discussion on it? Not seeing any more discussion. Can I take a vote? All in favor? Thumbs? Me included. Me included? So it's five, nobody's against it. Thank you. So that's boom, boom, boom. We'll get that one out of the way. The next one is request removal of a handicap sign located at one eleven Grove Street. Removal of a handicap sign. To have a motion to discuss.
Maybe that we support this resolution.
Oh, you do? All right. Any discussion anymore?
In a second.
So, so Rennie Scott Childress is a motion, I'll second. Anybody second this so we can get this out? Doug Coop? Any discussion on this? All right, all in favor? Thumbs? Usually don't have any problem with all these things here, but you know, we got to go through the motions. So, and you guys can see my thumb. No one's against it. That's five. Four. Okay. Ooh, the next thing on item is request for no parking sign at twenty-two Mary's Avenue. And that is from all the women, Michelle Hurst. Do you have anything to add to that, Michelle?
Hi, thank you Chairman Davis. I had a lengthy conversation with John Schultheis. And we're looking into like the traffic patterns up on Mary's Avenue and the congestion caused by the high school and possible, you know, future traffic activity with the emergency room being switched over to Mary's Avenue. And some sightline problems and Don Tolloman had also put in for a speed study. So John was going to go out and measure the width of the street and just, you know, there had been a no parking sign at one point on one side of the street down. So we're just kind of looking at a bunch of different things going from Ward Nine and then into Ward Five. So we're waiting for that study and then, so I think we're just going to table this. Is John here?
City Engineer John Schultheis, you still here?
Yeah, the, the only thing I have to add, I did, I did measure the street width. But yeah, as Alderwoman Hirsch said, I've requested the Chief Ten T to place the speed feedback sign there, which acts as a data collector, would give us some information about the volume and speed there. So if, if, if the committee wants to table or otherwise, you know, that would be not my, not my decision.
So the, the original request went in because of some, you know, sightline problems with parking. And then, you know, the discussion with John, so we decided like just to look, take an overall holistic approach, you know, and looking at the area before figuring things out, moving on. So I was going to make a motion to table.
Ask, how large are the vehicles that are parking there?
It depends. There had been a business that was parking large vans and it was creating sightline problems for some of the neighbors.
So if they're vans, they're not longer than twenty-five feet?
Correct.
Okay.
Randy, just let me, I don't need a second to, do I need a second to table this, Randy?
No, no, we didn't motion, so we can just put it on to old business for next month.
All right, so and with the request of all the women, Michelle Hurst, I'm going to table this into next month. Okay, Michelle?
Yes, thank you.
All right, I got that to the side. And moving on then, it will be request removal handicap parking sign located at forty-two, is it LeVane, LeVane Street? LeVane or Levine, LeVane Street? LeVane Street. And I went past there myself, Michelle, so I was, I, I seen the forty-two on one side of a house. But it's, oh, I guess that's actually Andrew Street, that it has a forty-two because it's a two apartments. Went down, so I'm, I, I think I seen where the location, the actual house was. So this request removal handicap parking sign located at forty-two LeVane Street. Anything you want to add to that, all the women, Michelle?
Uh, no. Yeah, this is, this is the one with the two, right? Yeah, on the corner. Yeah, so there's just one person in that building that needs it, so.
I think that's.
And we're adding one to another part, you know, and another address, so.
This one, I think, is this removal, this must just have one handicap. It's another one at forty-nine LeVane Street that's removing one of two.
Right. Yeah, okay.
All right, so forty-two.
Forty-two, yeah, the person that was using it that had had it was deceased, so.
Right, so.
Did we do the, the one at forty-five LeVane Street, though?
Not yet, coming up.
Okay.
Coming up. So this is forty-two LeVane Street and motion.
Motion.
Randy Scott Childress, second. Michelle Hurst, any discussion on it? Alrighty, all in favor, the committee report, request removal handicap parking sign located at forty-two LeVane Street. All in favor? Thumbs? Anyone against? I'm not against, I'm for the thumbs, but I'm literally, so anyone against? Okay, all right, that's five. For removal of that. Now, the next one is request a handicap parking sign at forty-five LeVane Street. And as I had the placard number, it's four eight five zero zero eight eight. And all the women, Hirsch, and I just don't have any, I'm not sure if somebody, if city clerk has received that or something like that, that information, but I don't have that information at this time. If you could provide it to me or to the city clerk's office and so they could have that attached for this committee report?
I sent a photo in with the.
With the, with, yeah, I see it says a placard, please reference attached photo. I, I have to go back. I didn't see any attachment on my thing, but I got it, you know, I was looking at my. Okay, yeah, we just need to have that for the committee report. I don't think that's going to be a problem. And so this committee report request, request a handicap parking sign at forty-five LeVane Street. Again, City Engineer John Schultheis has no problem with this. And so I just need a motion. Got Childress, second, Michelle Hurst, any discussion, further discussion on this? Not seeing any further discussion. All in favor of request the handicap parker site at forty-five LeVane Street? Good. Anyone oppose? Okay, so we have forty-two, we have forty, now. Request removal of one handicap parking sign low at forty-nine LeVane Street, owner of building requests that one of the two signs be removed as only one tenant requires a sign. Okay, that's forty-nine LeVane Street. Anything you want to add to this, all the women, Hirsch?
I know, I spoke with the building owner and he requested it because the house next door was going to be requesting a sign, so.
Okay.
Consolidated.
We're moving all over the place on that street.
It gets really busy there, you know, with the high school and all the.
Yep, so can I have a motion discussion? Michelle Hurst, second. Randy Scott Childress, any further discussion needed? Not seeing any hands. I was just going to read the committee request, remove a one handicap parker sign at forty-nine LeVane Street. Order the building request that one of the two signs be removed as only one tenant requires sign. All in favor of this? Show of thumbs? Anyone oppose? Don't see any thumbs. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And that does it for new business. The only thing I had on old business that I see here is this my discussion on when, when I seen the yellow signs, the flags, I guess, that had been, that when I was down in Florida and were being used to on a busy and intersection highway, if you want to say. And A one, which is real busy down there in Florida and how these signs, and you know, what I seen from me and my, my wife and my, myself's usage as well as and residents down there and vacationers. And it worked well and with the sign, you know, a yellow flag that you use to go from one side of a busy street to another. And, and this gives a more visibility to motorists that somebody's crossing an intersection. And I, I, I heard, I believe I heard back from, I believe, and hold me correctly, I believe it was Doug Coop that has reached out to me about, and Doug, what street is that again, up there by the church?
I believe, I believe Tony was talking about on North Front Street.
Well, we talked about North Front Street, correct?
Yeah, by the, the.
Front Street Navarre?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I was, my suggestion on this is, basically, I think it's a good idea. There's some possible downsides. Why don't we just try a pilot? And so just see how it works out, you know, we'll learn something from it. See how, you know, do, do signs disappear? Do we, do they all end up on one side of the street, et cetera, et cetera? Let's just, just try it and then go from there.
Yes, and I, any other questions before I time in? I, I did, I passed it along to, I just wanted to see, I believe I passed this communication along to John Schultheis as well as Ed Norman, just to get their feedback and, and John, not sure if you had a chance since you're here and to, and look at that request or that, this, and potential requests. And I was just, I reached out to Ed just to see, you know, obviously there's going to be some type of price in this cost to either make the flags or make the, the PVC pipes where the flags will have to be. And, but I haven't heard back from Ed Norman on that, so, you know, I didn't want to do something without, you know, everybody knowing what the potential cost is to do something like this. But John, City Engineer John Schultheis, were you able to even, and look at this? That?
Sure, well, yeah, thanks. As, as you may know, I used to live in Florida, so I've seen these, I've seen these in use. And I, I think it's, it's worth trying. It's not a technique that's listed in in MUTCD or, or the New York State Supplement. So I, there, there's nothing to, to stop the city from trying it. I, I, I do think if Ed Norman was here, he would ask maybe for, for some funding, you know, to implement this. He would probably tell you it's, it's not currently in his budget and.
Fifty dollars.
And that's why I wanted it, I wanted to get Ed's feedback of, of potential cost, what the estimated cost would be before we went out and did something. And because, you know, I know, I don't foresee it being a lot of dollars. And but again, I, I just requested, waiting for his feedback of what this cost might be, so I can bring it back to this committee and then to the full council this past about what this would be. And, you know, I'm still driving uptown and I'm still seeing, you know, you know, near misses of, or potential in testering motorists and at some locations and just for the cars, things, whatever like that. So as Doug's Coop has, Alderman, Doug Coop has stated, I would like to do a pilot on this, just to see and, you know, how it might work. And but again, I just want to wait for a cost, because again, it's going to be a cost for the, for the city, you know, the DPW to make these and put them up. And so I guess I, I will have to table this until I can get some more information from Ed Norman. And hopefully by next commit, next month's committee, I can present something to you guys.
Yeah, just leave it on old business.
Well, it's on old business, so I don't have to table, so it's still on old business, so. And so I'll, I will reach out again to Ed after this meeting and just to see if he can start working on what, what might be a cost for this. And in the meantime, if you guys on this committee, and I know Doug has said Front Street, that's a good place to target. And, you know, an area that might be concerning, that's when I was thinking about this was Front Street. I'm not sure if it's, you know, we have, you know, a couple of the streets that we might want to use as, as a project or as a pilot, I might say. Just to see how this might work. So if you guys do have some, a street or one or two streets that you might be, think that might, this might work. And let's make sure we get that in there. And then if it is working and it looks like it's something that's going to be beneficial and then we can push it out and farther to some other main streets. Does that sound fair? Good. All right, so again, in the meantime, between now and next month, if you guys have some streets and, and drop me some names and then, in the meantime, I will reach out to Ed Norman and super superintendent of DPW to see if he can get me some, an estimated cost. That is only old business I had. Anybody else have anything? Doug Coop?
Yeah, Tony, I wanted to inquire about the, 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 the status of that situation on Wall Street. That must be a snafu. We passed two resolutions for the same address. One which was for a handicap parking sign, the other was for loading zone. And, you know, I went up and checked out the meters and all the specifics of it and sent a note to you and Ed and I'm just, has there been any resolution on that?
I sent you something early, I sent you an email earlier this afternoon. Did you see that?
Oh, no, I have not.
All right, and let me look, bring it up here, hold on. It says, from what Ed Norman replied to me, says the loading zone should be on the left side of meter three forty-one. This is a double meter. And then he said that the handicap should be on the left side of meter three forty-two. And he believes that the handicap was for Mr. Spinnack, Spynack at three twenty-five Wall Street.
Yeah.
So, and from what I gathered here, when you he, so Ed is saying at, located at, let me see here again, I've got so many numbers here, three forty-one. And it seems when, when you went and did some research, it says three, meter three forty-one is location three seventeen Wall Street. Is that the one that we were talking about, the loading zone? Yes?
I think so.
Okay, and now he's saying, he was saying, Ed said today, he said the handicap should be on the left, be to the left side of meter three forty-two. And when you were, and back in August had sent three forty-two, meter three forty-two is three twenty-five Wall Street. Which I believe is the office of Mr. Spinnack. So I'm not sure, I believe from that, I believe we have to do a new communication. But Randy, you might be able to help me out. Can I do that since it was on agenda? This is old business, it was just, and, and I guess a mix up with the numbers, the meter numbers, so that's why DPW couldn't do anything. But what I gathered from Ed Norman, he says we have to do a new committee report. Because, you know, it was, it was a wrong meter listed on there.
Oh, I think, yeah, if you wanted to write it right now.
Yeah.
I think, I, I think probably to be absolutely correct, we should vote to suspend the rules since.
Could have a motion to suspend the rules?
I knew that we suspend the rules for the purpose of considering this piece of legis, legislation regarding Wall Street.
Second. Doug Coop? All in favor? Throw a thumbs? Okay, we're suspending the rules, so, and I will just write that, so I will rate it, request and handicap request. Handicap sign on the, on the left side, I'm just going to rate this the same thing as Ed, left side of meter three forty-two. At three forty-two, if I'm right, from this thing here, from what Doug gave me, three forty-two is at, at, located at three twenty-five Wall Street.
It's a technical point that, when you say left and right, does it have to specify how you're looking at the meter?
He, he just said the left side, that's what Ed said, request the left side of the meter.
Well, if he knows what he's talking about, it depends upon.
Yep, I'm just going to write, write, request handicap sign on the left side of meter three forty-two, located and on or near, I'll put that on or near three twenty-five Wall Street. Okay, so that's that first one. Do I have a motion for this? Because I guess I got to do each one's, emotion, Michelle Hurst, second, Randy Scott Childress. Any more discussion on this before we take the vote? Seeing it, all in favor of this request? Thumbs up? Thank you, all in favor? All right, so that's that one. I'll get that out and the next one then is, he said. Let's see here. Request in loading zone should I'm going to say to the left. Request loading zone to the left side of meter three forty-one. And that's a double meter and this is, it says, and when Doug's work and thing, and located at or near, and this would be three seventeen Wall Street. Okay. Can I have a motion of the discussion? Motion? Randy Scott Childress, second, Michelle Hurst, any more discussion on this? Do, any discussion on it? I'm not seeing any discussion, kinda call for vote, all in favor of this? Again, request loading zone to the left side of meter three forty-one, locate that. At or near three seventeen Wall Street. Thumbs? All in favor? No one is opposed? That is it. I got those two, I will submit them, we had them back in. That is all I have for old business. Anybody else have anything?
Good work, Tony, thank you.
Try, try my best. I don't see any more old business, I don't see anybody has anything, so I will call this meeting to, oh. I'll call this meeting to adjourn at seven twenty-nine. I guess I have to have a motion to call this meeting. Call the meeting, Doug Coop, second, Michelle Hurst, all in favor? Anyone oppose? Hope not. Call the meeting to end at seven twenty-nine P M. Hurrah, hurrah. Thank you, guys, again, and and all the people. Good night, take care, enjoy first, first evening of fall.